Okay, it's March 12th, 7:02. I'm going to call the Select Board Meeting to Order. I'd like to remind everybody that this is being recorded for our YouTube thing. And first off, I think we should have a moment of silence, memory of Rosemary Hints. Okay. Is there any public comment? I don't see any. So are there any volumes that turns to you then, right now at this point?
So I, on the items to be added to the agenda, from my perspective, I just wanted to note really quickly that we've received an abatement request today that was well past the deadline for consideration tonight, so it'll be on the next agenda. I'd also just request if we move the liquor license renewal up after we're done with this early business, so we can get folks, I heard someone talking, but I don't think it was to me. And then lastly as well, if we could table the minutes, I sent along all kinds of ordinances, but I didn't, I realized this afternoon, I didn't send you the minutes on time, so.
And under new business, John, if we can, an add, a discussion on admin. And is it on here? I haven't, it has, old business follow-up, good. So admin, just discussing select board admin from now until town meeting. Thank you.
All right. So we will add that on to the agenda. And now in regards to the minutes, we'd need a motion to table.
Motion to table minutes from February 27th.
And I think Bronwyn, I can't hear, but I believe she is seconding. Cannot hear her.
Bronwyn, you're muted.
I'm sorry. Sorry about that happening. There. I tried to move that we table the minutes.
Okay, then I'll second that.
I mean, I'm happy to second whichever.
And all those in favor?
Hi. This from Stephen Mace, and he's saying he can't hear the meeting. Can someone give him a call? Is he up there?
Stephen is on, and can attendees that can hear us stick a thumbs up if you're on camera, just to make sure.
We can hear you, Taylor.
Perfect. And if we want, we can wait just a moment, so Stephen gets an idea of what we're doing.
I hear something way in the background.
Yes, that's Stephen on a cellphone.
Okay.
All right, and I'll wait till Rich gets back, I guess.
Yeah, wait a sec while he's trying to get that straightened out.
Oh, all right, then stand by. Stephen wants to make public comment. He couldn't acknowledge us.
Perfect, if we put him close to that.
Okay, if I public comment again, then Stephen.
So it's me?
Yes.
I would hope that in this meeting, you all have had opportunity to see the quotes that TOPMB has received for new floats for the Wharf. And I am hoping there is discussion about the amount it will take to replace the floats on the commercial side. And we can give Kennebec Marine the go-ahead to start building floats without a public hearing in anticipation of approval at a public hearing.
For clarity, for ARPA funds, there's a new quote from Kennebec Marine for the new flow, the finger float and the landing. We're still waiting on a quote for around the Love Nest, around the picnic area, to replace damage, shore up the ledge to to mitigate all the damage.
Okay.
Well, we all know that there's time, it's time critical, and Kennebec Marine is willing to take action. I guess Stephen's wondering, putting words in your mouth, but if there's anything you can do to Kennebec Marine, saying, yeah, we're going to have a special town meeting and start building these things, so they can get in the water as close to April 15th as possible. It's sticky that we're authorizing work before we have any money. I mean, obviously, we were not supposed to do that. But if we wait until town meeting, we probably will not make the deadline.
If we wait for a public hearing, we may miss that deadline as well to get all the work done when the recreational floats go in.
Absolutely. Well, a public hearing is a public, a town meeting, a special town.
A special meeting, yeah.
It's more than just having a public hearing.
But it doesn't require more than seven days' notice.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
Is any of that on this agenda?
It was not on this agenda. We received quotes very late in the game, and it was past the deadline. And we're still also awaiting information from MMA about ARPA, and they have not gotten back to us yet, but I know they will. They're just busy this time of year, so.
I think we're pretty confident. The $48,000, $48,000 for the three floats.
$50,000.
Five zero?
Yeah.
Okay, $50,000, not 48, pardon me, for the landing, for the new commercial and the finger is well within the ARPA funds the board has discussed.
Could I suggest that we add this discussion to the agenda? But it's not, we're in the middle of public comment here. We really don't need to be discussing it. We need to put it on the agenda, and then, then you can give us the information, and we can discuss it and make some kind of a decision.
We'll give you a call back. Stephen, my battery's gonna die.
Okay. All right, appreciate it. Sorry about my sound problems.
So can stick that under new business, ARPA?
Yeah. And if we can call them back on a town phone, that would be great. I don't know how long this is going to last.
All right, so we've concluded public comment. We've gotten through another item to be added to the agenda. We did not have any scheduled appointments. Minutes have been tabled. Before we get to review, would we like to jump to new business on the liquor license renewal for the Osprey?
Yes, please, let's do that.
Perfect. And just by way of background, historically for renewals, the town of Georgetown has had businesses pay for an advertisement of a public hearing for a liquor license renewal. Last week, after talking with Zoli and Sarah, I reached out to Bablo, the Bureau of Alcohol, Liquor, et cetera, up in Augusta. And it turned out that we did not have to have a public hearing for the renewal, so we don't have to pass along a $200 fee onto the business owner. But we did have the option to hold a public hearing, but if we did, we would have to advertise. So for this item, we did not go for the public hearing, just to help save some money, et cetera. So there is a liquor license renewal application before?
Ready for a hearing, a motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve a liquor license renewal for Four Cuckoo Birds Incorporated, the Osprey.
Second, second, and thank them for their great community engagement and service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any discussion?
None.
None? Let's vote then. I'm for it.
For.
Yep.
Perfect. And there will be a license renewal to be signed after the meeting.
Roger.
And we'll get that to you, Zoli and Sarah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Zoli, paddles are in my garage. I'll bring them by in the near future.
I appreciate it.
And we really do truly appreciate that you going through the process of looking into that. It's not that we wouldn't want to go through the due process, but we just wanted to make sure that it makes sense. And with, you know, newspaper not necessarily being the best advertisement, I think, that I'd be happy to discuss if we need to do it in the future, what it looks like. But thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
All right.
Thank you.
And back under items for review, we had a series of ordinances that had been submitted after the last board meeting, including the TOPMB ordinance, building and demolition permit ordinance, the flood plain management ordinance, the shoreline zoning ordinance, the small wind-powered energy generators ordinance, the solar energy generator ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, and the wireless communications ordinance. I would just stress that all of these items will be taken up under new business on our disposition of ordinances.
So we're not discussing them now. We'll discuss them under new business. Is that correct?
Yes, in 15 minutes or less, hopefully.
Okay, thank you. Good move.
All right. And under assessing items, we're still working on the application for working waterfront land classification for the Jameses. We've been working with Bill Van Tining on updating some maps to find out exactly which acreage would apply in relation to that application. The town was, in terms of correspondence, I passed along the volunteer fire department's monthly newsletter, the legislative bulletins for main municipal association, and a good mid-coast council of governments February newsletter. And that follows the correspondence. We had no other and we've got Jeff Birdso in the waiting room. And under continuing items, we did have an OBD approval for Anderson and McKinnon on 14 Ocean Avenue. And that packet, that approval was included in your packet. And there were no permit by rules or NERPO that I have received up to this point, and I would turn this over to Mary for the finance director update.
Sure. I just have a couple of little things. We are still working on the audit. I spent a lot of yesterday and half of today. I'm getting additional work out to the auditors. I did inquire with the school committee when I was at the meeting on, whatever that was, last Thursday. They have not yet received their audit as well. So as you know, budget time is starting up and in full gear. And just a couple of things for the board on that. The board had taken salaries away from the Finance Advisory Committee a couple of years ago. And I just wanted to know who on the board, if any, you know, if it's going to be all the board members or just your personnel liaison, but who was handling salaries for budgeting for the select board?
You mean who will make recommendations?
Correct.
Of budget recommendations.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. Because the FAC has left those, you know, left those out. As far as, you know, the transfer station and the town office and all of that stuff, they've kind of, you know, stepped back from doing that. So I just didn't know if there was going to, if it was going to be all of the board, or if it was going to be one member. I just wasn't sure who I should be directing to.
We had a discussion with everyone. Well, I remember who made a final determination, but I remember all of us discussed cost of living, CPI, and that was
Okay, so it's going to be all three?
That's how
That's worked for me, because does that sound good, Bronwyn?
Yes, I was going to suggest that there be an initial report or proposal coming from the personnel liaison, as in me, and the finance director, which then all three of us would review and make a decision about, because I think it involves a little research into how our salaries are stacking up against other towns in the region. And yes, it would come in coordination with the COLA, if we're doing COLA. So yeah, I mean, fine, for all three of us, you and I can work something up and share it for discussion. And whenever the, whenever we're going to deal with that as a group.
Okay, all right. And then, as far as ARPA money, the rescue plan money, we do have an inquiry out with MMA. I went right to the director of the legal services. Actually, I had reached out to Amanda, and Amanda had said that I really should reach out to this person. So that's who I've sent an email to, pretty much just asking if it's really as easy as counting it all as lost revenue and allowing us to disperse it. So we're just waiting on that back. And then I just want to let the board know that at the end of the month, I'll be taking a little time off on that last week. So I will be here, obviously, for the conversation between the FAC and the board and all that stuff. But I've just got some appointments lined up that I need to deal with, so. And I think that was it for me. If anybody has any questions, Paula.
I don't.
Okay.
Are you leaving or are you staying?
No.
Right now?
Okay.
All right. And next up on the agenda, if there were no questions for Mary, is an update from the code enforcement officer.
So for an update, I have an actual request of the board. This is again, we're going back to lot, excuse me, lot 13 U, lot 21, it's for Blueberry Hill. Melissa Peterson, this has been an ongoing issue. We're still frustrated at trying to figure out a solution to this. And I, you know, in regards to this, this is not faulting the homeowner at this point. This is just a very difficult situation. I'm back to where I kind of started, at requesting the town to consider allowing us to pursue the possibility of having a septic system installed across the street from this house on town property, which would cross Blueberry Hill. And I had the opportunity to show this to Bronwyn today, and although I've talked to you a lot about it, John, you haven't seen this. And just for perspective, so Blueberry Hills here, which is owned by Michael and Jimmy McManus. The house in question is right here, lot 21. Melissa Peterson owns this lot, and she also owns this one, which is a brown house, kind of offset from Blueberry Hill. Now, we thought we had a solution by putting, having this septic field placed on this easement, which is owned by Tiffany and Chris Dumas. The problem is that we realized that this is very specific in saying that it is a permanent easement for this brown house, not lot 21. So they're not able to do that. We tried to configure a workaround. It's just, right now, we're at a standstill with that. So again, to be able to go across Blueberry Hill to utilize, most likely, it would have to come down a little ways away from the road, but up towards this area into somewhat of a more level area. Tonight, I'm not necessarily looking for an absolute. What I am looking for is, is the town willing to? If there's a willingness to allow it, then we've got to go back to, in this case, it would be Dale Savoy and Jerry Mitchell to look at this and to determine, is it doable? The initial was maybe, but we didn't go so far as to make a design plan. The other problem is, as you know, John, is that this is pretty much all ledge underneath.
All ledge, yes.
Is that, that might be a deal breaker right there.
And is that other, the garage? Was that ever more than, ever get more permits to be anything more than just a garage?
This?
Yes. Did that actually have anything in it to make it other than, because that's all it has ever been. It's never, I don't think it's ever had a plumbing, any plumbing as such.
It does have water to it. It has had, you know, sinks and that, that kind of thing. Again, I can't speak to what was actually coming through that pipe through the culvert.
I know what was.
Is there a bathroom in there? A toilet?
No, not, no, there's not.
That may just, that may have some bearing on what's, you know, whether, if there's no, it may not be able, you may not be able to literally get a, something for that building if it's not capable, if it's not.
I don't
You know, if it's never had one, you may not be able to get one for a period, then that would just, then it would be just that one house.
Which is possible.
I mean, that's just one way of looking at, I mean, that's just one way of looking at it.
It is. And I acknowledge this isn't necessarily a town problem. It's homeowner's, lot owner's problem. We're just trying to find a solution to help out. I don't want to go through the process of working with, you know, taking any more time from Jerry Mitchell or Dale, if the town's not even open to it. So that would be an open, closed, we're fine. However, and like I say, if the town was willing, we'd go, we would get a site evaluation for that, a design. We'd have to consider the road itself. It would include, you know, we'd have to include easements, not just from the town, but also the McMahons for the road. I mean, this is not a, this is not a, this is not a shoo-in kind of solution here by any stretch. However, I don't want to, again, like I say, don't want to waste anybody's time on this.
What Chris suggested to me this afternoon was that we might approve the concept, dependent on an actual plan being presented that we would subsequently have to approve. And if they got all of these, the homeowners might not be able to afford the solution of drilling through whatever granite is under that road. The McMahons might not be willing to give an easement to go there. There are so many ifs in this scenario. I think Chris is just trying to say you've, there's some precedent for the town offering an easement on town land. Would you consider this if it turns out to be feasible? I'm only comfortable with it if there's a second opportunity to vote on whether to approve a specific plan or not. And that's assuming they come up with one. My own personal feeling is it's going to be cost prohibitive.
I agree, Bronwyn. That's exactly what I'm hoping for. We would definitely come back to the board once we had, we knew that it was a workable solution, and then get final approval. But as I say, I do think this is going to be more expensive than they think it's going to be more.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, it's not going to be that, I think they, they just see it as a gravity-fed possibility that's really not going to benefit them in the long run financially. So I've spent so much time on this, I want to be done.
Right. I see our, the official town policy should be, we can't do anything until there is a deeded access across Blueberry Hill Road from Jimmy and Mike Mack. We can't do anything.
Yeah, there's no easement existing, so.
Because we could say tonight, yes, you could do it. And I don't want the homeowner to be confused that that is authorization to go across Blueberry Hill. So the first thing we need is something from Jimmy and Mike that says, regardless of what the town decides, you have access to cross our property, being the road.
Totally agree.
To dig it out.
Pardon?
Access to dig it out.
Of course. And if this was town property, I would say you had to have a public hearing and involve everyone above them on Blueberry Hill from Mark Donovan on, because they're not going to be able to cross that stretch while they're blasting or whatever they're doing.
And I don't know that blasting is a viable option, based on the precarious nature of the wells and everything else, how close those houses are.
It would be an issue.
If, and John and Dale would know if tipping is not feasible. I don't know. Again, I think we have to, we have to attribute this plan as well.
The first thing is
And I have a verbal, I have a verbal, that Mike, from Michael, that he's fine. I'm still trying to get ahold of Jimmy. That's not answering your request, but I am saying that I'm working.
Yeah. I think that's, that's a good, without that, there isn't anything.
Because as Bronwyn said, I mean, there is precedent. We have done this. That land is not going to be used by the town that far away from the road. I can see Culver work along Five Islands Road for the future. But up that high is just dead land. So it's not going to hurt the town or harm the town by granting it. But I think we have to, regardless of how long it takes, Jimmy and Mike have to put something in writing saying that they'll grant it right away.
That's a start.
Yeah.
I have another question, guys. This, this land that the town owns, is it part of the Ipkar Preserve? What is it? I mean, how do we own this? It seems like a little piece of nowhere.
It's a rural piece, Bronwyn. But it's serpentine.
Yeah, but why do we, why do we have it?
I don't think that's, that's not part of the Ipkar Preserve. It's just some property originally.
Well, I think it ties into it. This isn't going to, it started, 24 is town.
Yeah.
It kind of comes all the way down, follows Blueberry Hill, it empties here, and then circles up and around.
It's the old ball field. And the ball field parking lot.
I believe that.
So 32 would be, is that?
Morens, I believe.
Bronwyn, let's see what we're saying.
That's okay. I saw it this afternoon. I remember it. I remember the map.
Yeah.
It was an old
There is a separation between 24 and 33, because 33 bleeds over the right away into here, but nevertheless.
But what Bronwyn's getting at is if it is part of the Ipkar Preserve, there are restrictions on what we can and cannot do with that.
Okay, that's good. Yeah, I will check in on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't have thought of that.
My thought is, it's not in that, but I don't know.
There's a line.
Yeah.
But if the Ipkar's gave it to us, that line may be part of the plot plan.
Yeah.
Can you research that, Tom?
Yeah.
All right, well, that's helpful. And then I'm happy to move forward with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for the thrill on Blueberry Hill, Chris.
It's right.
And we're now back into the regular agenda with committee updates. We were in receipt of the Conservation Commission meeting minutes in January. Jess had been out of town and got them over to us. And in terms of membership, the board is aware that Julie Pankey has stepped down from the planning board after years of dedicated service. Philip Mason, who previously was appointed as an alternate, is now interested in filling the unexpired term of Julie Pankey, and we'd need a motion for that.
I'd like to move, please, as personnel liaison. Thank you. Philip Mason to fill the unexpired term of Julie Pankey on the planning board, and Pamela Gonnell to fill the unexpired term of Philip Mason as an alternate to the planning board. And I'd like to note that, that these memberships support the, are supported by the chair of the planning board, Bob Trabona, who has dealt with both of these people and recommends them to these positions. I would also note that it leaves an opening for an alternate on the appeals board.
Did you second that, Rich?
Are you done?
Yep.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Nope, let's vote.
Now you're into liaison updates.
Okay. I had my shellfish, and they're just, there's a couple of resources. Okay, that, that resource program that you got to pay for, they were all for it. It's just more information on varied sections of, you know, along the coast, along the whole coast. They're still looking. They were hoping to do some cleanup, but they weren't sure whether the Mid Coast or Main Coast Fishing Association might be able to help with some of their cleanup. They had a couple of their accesses, so they were looking, you know, they're also part of that, also looking into that, or they were considering that. And the only other thing, they were, they are going to have their budget, or they should have their budget. They'll have it in the office here by the 18th. That was the only other thing. I think that's all I had from that one. And the rec committee, they're still working on, they're still trying to get, working on their times and dates and where's on the get-to-know-your-neighbor. They're still working out a bunch of, just a bunch of timing and stuff. They're having a heck of a time in swim lessons because the Y has gone through a new swim director, and they're having a heck of a time getting in. You know, they've gone through a couple of them apparently, or the interim one's difficult to get hold to, or they're just having a hard time with that. That's their biggest, the biggest thing. And all their other stuff seems to be going well with the pickleball and yoga and all that stuff. So that's really all I got right there, too. So not much.
Liaison for TOPMB, a couple of weeks ago, we met with a contractor discussing repair. Liaison for TO PMB, a couple of weeks ago, we met with a contractor discussing repair. It was broken into five sections. One section was around Love Nest, reinforcing the ledge underneath the Love Nest towards the Molden Island, where the access used to be, uh, around the picnic area. Another phase was from the picnic area to the dumpsters where previous work had been done, so it would be permit by rule. We're rehabilitating, we're not doing anything new, we're just maintenance and upkeep. And then the fifth would be to the west of the old repair in the vicinity of that, the White House closest to town property. I don't have the homeowner.
Dope.
Dope, okay. And that property was, it's gonna need a full-fledged application from Army Corps DEP. That's gonna be an 18, well, it could be an 18-month process. They'd say right now it's taken 12 to 14, 16 months to get a new application in to do any kind of rehabilitation on the shoreline. The first four zones will be much quicker, could permit by rule, it's already been approved, they'll put the application in, the DEP will ignore the application and it will be granted, um, by default. The first two Stephen's gonna talk to later, it's cutting away cement along the access to the wharf in front of the Love Nest, pouring concrete, pinning it to ledge, going all the way to the Molden ramp access, and then around in front of the picnic tables where the Christmas tree usually is. And the big pieces of rock will be brought in, that will be pinned. And I mean, these are big pieces, these are probably six or eight feet long and four foot square. And you're rectangular, it's just gonna be huge, and they're gonna be pinned. So once these things are in, they'll be backfilled with bigger stone going to smaller stone. So it'll be hopefully a more permanent repair than trying to, um, put rip wrapper in that the, the last repair 40 years ago did. Uh, there's gonna be a significant price to this. Um, I think the intention is for Love Nest and picnic area to be separated out. A quote will be provided, and that work, if approved, will be done in about a week or 10 days' time. And it'll be concluded the mid, around the same time the floats are going in. They'll be doing all the work, so the wharf will be ready for the open of Five Islands Lobster Company. And they know that's a hard deadline, so. That's the liaison update, we're still waiting. I know Stephen's been pushing to get quotes, so we can take the next step for using ARPA funds. But anyway, there's gonna be $50,000 bill for the floats, and there's probably gonna be a $50,000 bill for reinforcing around the Love Nest on the ledge. And that work's gonna have to be done.
Yep.
I mean, the storm or the tide event we had this weekend is an example of we're gonna need to do something to shore up, or we're gonna be continually repairing infrastructure, be it wharf or decking boards or the Love Nest itself. That's what I have.
Anything, Bronwyn?
I don't think there's anything from committees. And I'm not sure whether I'm reporting this as a board member update or a liaison update, but as personnel liaison, I wanted to report that I, that I met this afternoon with Fire Chief Waylon to complete a performance evaluation for his first year in the position. And we had 25 responses from active members of the Fire Department. I, I think that's about 50% of the surveys that were distributed to members, overwhelmingly favorable response citing his professionalism, his attention to detail and organization, and the extent to which he has been able to raise the standards of performance of the department. We also had responses from most of the administrative side of things. That, that had to do with operations, with being at the fire scene, with taking care of the emergency EMS program, with uh, training, et cetera. Things that we on the Select Board only see indirectly as the Fire Department successfully deals with calls. But the other side of things is administrative, which we have much more direct knowledge of and input to. And we had feedback in those areas from the Town Administrator, the Finance Director, and two of the three Select Board members. Mr. Donaldson declined to participate. However, we have identified a couple of areas that will be subject of increased activity in the future, one of them Fire Prevention Week, and another timely reports to the board. Um, it's been suggested several times, uh, once from Terry Taylor, the FAC liaison to the Fire Department, that we have quarterly reports from the chief, but those have never been on the agenda. So it's been up to him to say, I have something I wanna tell you. And I think Tyler and I have talked about, including in these updates like the Finance Director and the Code Enforcement Officer give us from time to time, um, reports from the Fire Department, totally aside from issues that come up like ambulances that are sidelined for repairs or storm management stuff. There will be a summary of all of this and a signed report in the Personnel folder by the end of next week, um, which authorized folks on the Select Board are welcome to pursue. And if you wanna have any further discussion about those conclusions, we can schedule an executive session at some point. But I'm just happy to have had the conversation and wanted to share that. And my next objective as personnel liaison is to provide the same kind of review of transfer station staff. And all of that is kind of a prelude to coming back to you with salary recommendations, which ideally would annually be based on performance reviews in a, in a perfect human resources world. Which we don't inhabit, but we could, we could imitate. That's it.
Thank you. I've got, I don't have any real updates.
Nothing.
All right. And so we would now be moving on to old business, and the first item, or the only item on old business is a follow-up discussion regarding the Code Enforcement Officer position ahead of tomorrow's meeting with Arousik and Woolwich. So I included in your packet an outline that Richard put together with some ideas of a distribution of compensation, benefits, et cetera, that we had shared with the administrators in Arousik, as well as the administrator in Woolwich, who then helped disseminate it to their board, just so we could get the three towns to kind of be thinking along similar lines tomorrow. I also included in your packet some data that Chris provided about different permit breakdowns, et cetera, and workload amongst the, the various towns. So I think the goal of this item was to, at least going into tomorrow, designate one of the board members to be kind of a spokesperson for Georgetown, so we don't have 15 people all saying the same thing.
There are only three of us, Tyler. There can't be 15. There are only three of us.
There were three of you, plus me, plus an Arousik board and Woolwich.
Yeah, yeah, I know, all together, but.
Woolwich adds five. Imagine how much fun that is.
It, in terms of tomorrow's meeting, it seems to me that the major point of that meeting is to determine the extent of the interest within the three towns in a mutual arrangement, in a, a regional arrangement, and creating a full-time position that would attract a qualified person to come and to stay for a while. And some of that, I guess, depends on budgeting considerations. How much money are we prepared to put on the table toward that end? But in terms of all of the details about who is the, who's handling the payroll, where does the mileage start? I would have thought that, that if we agreed that we wanted to move forward with the concept, that we would appoint probably the three administrators to come back with a proposal that detailed all of those, all of those items. In terms of the allocation of, of funding, it certainly seems as if Chris's report of, I think it's 15 hours a week in Georgetown and, and 12 to 15 in, in Woolwich, and every now and then something in Arousik suggests that the major funding has to come, uh, almost 50/50 from Georgetown and Woolwich. And then Arousik kicks in. Does that, I mean, does that, um, in line with everybody else's thinking about this meeting?
Bronwyn, in talking with Chris, he is, the compensation from Woolwich right now is in the $9,000 to $10,000 vicinity.
No, no, no.
Yeah.
That's Arousik.
That's Arousik.
You said Wool.
Oh, I'm sorry, the Arousik, the, the small town is right around $9,000, $10,000. The things that are different is, Arousik doesn't offer medical, Woolwich offers partial with the medical. They don't pay mileage, so there are little things to work out. The point of this meeting right now with us is to say, with salary and the medical benefits, we're offering a cap. Uh, it looks like there's already a person that's interested in taking over for Chris. So now we're just going to, down the line of what is Georgetown offering to this bargain? And then certainly the administrators, of course, they should handle it. We just need to be aware, a phone needs to be dedicated, that there's gonna be expenses we don't have right now that will, will make this work a lot easier for a professional codes officer that's gonna be a full-time position.
And we have been discussing adding those costs. I mean, we've had intra-office discussions about the need for a dedicated phone and about the idea of expanding the position to enough of full-time to be able to offer healthcare. So it's not clear to me whether the, um, the individual that Chris has spoken with who's interested in taking over is actually from Woolwich. But it's not clear to me whether it's, um, his interest is in a joint position or, you know, replicating what Chris has been doing or a new position that is more permanent, shall we say.
That's what we're talking about, making a full-time position with the three towns, Bronwyn.
Uh, Rich, I understand that. I'm sorry, that's what I'm talking about, too. I don't know why we're not communicating. What I'm saying is that most of the details about how that would work should be proposed by the administrators coming back to us and saying, okay, you wanna do it, this is what, how we think it would work. Not that we're gonna decide all those things at tomorrow's meeting.
The big one is the compensation window is from my perspective, because Woolwich has a town meeting coming up in a few weeks, and it's more critical that they budget. And if we agree to a 40/40/20 split of compensation for phone, computer, salary, and medical benefits, that Woolwich is aware of what that 40% is going to entail, so they can make a budget item for town meeting in a few weeks. We have a little more time for that 40% discussion. So I think it is critical that we have an idea of what our upper number is for the total compensation package, what Georgetown is offering to the three-town codes enforcement officer position.
And do we have a number tonight for that?
I know that the town of Woolwich in my last conversation was looking at a placeholder of around 35 on their end. If we followed that similarly on a 40/40/20, you know, Georgetown budgeted around 35, that gets us towards 70. And then Arousik's contribution would probably be roughly around the cost of what the benefits would be. So I think 70-ish is kind of where the collective heads are now. And I just wanna also stress that Kristin Collins, our attorney, is very excited at this prospect. She is also Woolwich's town attorney, and wants to actually help work out a good interlokal agreement that benefits all parties. So we've got some good experts to help us. We're also letting Woolwich take those calls right now, so they can bill them and not us. And, you know, but I, I will say, if we're following around, I think 70-ish is kind of the sweet spot the collective minds are thinking. But I think part of this conversation, wanted to get our head around, is that number too high or too low before we go in tomorrow? Is that kinda, am I off-base?
Not your spot on.
Okay.
And to offset that, I mean, something we can quickly look at, what's the annual fee schedule for Georgetown with codes enforcement applications and planning board applications for fees? Do you have an, an idea?
No, I'm sorry, you catch me off-guard on that.
No, no, it's easy.
I mean, I could tell you what.
But something that may, this Select Board may have to look at moving into the new term, when they have the flexibility to establishing a fee schedule, is increase the fee schedule, so we can offset the money of the towns providing by the planning board permits and codes enforcement permits that are gonna be issued by the new CEO. So this isn't gonna be just a 35 out of Georgetown pocket. We obviously would not give the codes officer the, the fees any longer. We, they, those would roll into the town on unexpended fund. And if we increase those fees, then we could probably, um.
What are we spending, what are we spending now? Anybody have that number?
Well, that, that's what Rich just tried to.
I can tell you what my W-2 was, but I can't tell you what the actual, cause I have a stipend of $4,000 a year. Then we have mileage and then the, the fees, but I mean, my W-2 from Georgetown last year was somewhere in the, I think it's somewhere in the 24.
Yep.
So it's close, I mean, it's, it's.
So it's 30-ish.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm saying, mileage and with everything else.
I just want, um, cause when we're taking, uh.
You wanna come up to the table so Bronwyn can hear too?
So when we're taking permit fees, my only concern is that while 40/40/20 is a great starting number to have conversation, there's no doubt that Woolwich dwarfs us in the amount of permits, to the point that their permit fee for a building permit is 10 cents a square foot for unfinished, 15 for uh, finished space, whereas Georgetown is just a flat 20 cents for residential. So I, Woolwich is definitely a busier town for permits. So the only reason that, like, the email that I sent you, that I put them at more of a level playing field is because there's a little bit more to think about Georgetown because of our shoreline here and floodplain. I do think those numbers can be played with, but not to a place where Georgetown would be higher than Woolwich at any stretch, even if it was like 35, 30, and whatever, but it's just, you know, full disclosure in this.
Thanks, Rich.
Yeah, thank you, because Woolwich is a much larger town in terms of population also.
That's correct.
About twice or more than twice?
I think they're right over 3,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, more than twice.
Right.
And.
Also, a lot of the permits, Brahman, from my ten years with the planning board, a lot of towns allow the codes enforcement officer to issue permits that come before the Georgetown Planning Board. And in order to get those permit applications prepared and the plot pa- plans prepared with the attention to detail that our planning board requires, it takes a lot of time for the codes enforcement officer working with the applicants in preparation for a planning board than in other towns, Chris would just sit at a desk and grant a permit himself. So um, there are a lot of behind-the-scenes time with the seven o'clock until nine o'clock planning board meetings that we have twice a month. And everything that goes into preparing for that, that's where Georgetown's time with the codes officer will equal or surpass Woolwich on just raw time on each job. I think the forty forty twenty is gonna be accurate. It just matters on if that's total. If we say we're forty percent Jordan, Woolwich is thirty-five, so if we come up with a ninety thousand dollar compensation-ish, that's insurance, computer, cellphone. Um, they don't pay mileage, so we have, I mean, that's something that the administrators will iron out. But is that a ballpark number that we're looking at? Cause I mean, Woolwich from talking with Allison and talking with Jason, um, there is gonna, they're pressing for a number just so they can make sure that they're ready for their town meeting.
And and I know that in this budget year, Mary and I have talked about how Georgetown was hoping to go up from Chris's twenty-four, twenty-six to around thirty-two. So again, if which is going in around thirty-five and we're around the thirty-two, then on the healthcare, we're getting close to those numbers.
Yeah.
Without much of an increase and potential offsetting when we keep the fees.
Absolutely.
So are we going to say to the meeting tomorrow that we're willing to put thirty-two thousand on the table? Is that our top number?
I I think that was just salary.
Just salary, Brahman.
I think, I think the bigger thing is we want to figure out roughly what a good marketable starting salary would be to attract the kind of person. And that's where I think if we get up again, at the high-level number, whether it's seventy, whether it's seventy-five, whether it's sixty, then we can kind of cost-share out what those percentages are after the fact. And there's always the possibility as well that the person that applies may not want to take healthcare. And then there are some savings involved in that, too. So we just don't know on some piece. But a high level, a low level, and then I think the breakdown's negotiable tomorrow, you know? I think Erasik might balk a little bit at paying twenty percent. They might want to be closer to fifteen or ten. That's something I think collectively we can come up with tomorrow when we're in the room. But I wouldn't say.
So the initial, the initial impetus for this discussion was to decide who would speak for us. And I am not, um, I don't know that we've exposed the right, that that we've discussed the right facets to reveal that person. Uh, to some extent, it seems to me, y- you said a member of the select board. It seems to me that Tyler is actually the best prepared to speak for us. But that if a member of the select board is going to speak, it should be the the chair of the board, as in John.
Gonna give me a good cheat sheet. I'm just, I'm just not well-versed in it. I mean, that's, I mean, if that's the way it goes, as long as I have a cheat sheet to go by and um, that's, I mean, I just, I just don't want to start talking and.
Well, there'd be other, I mean, everyone is going to be present.
Right, right.
It's not as if that's the only person that can speak. I think that the issue is to to say that we are very seriously interested in doing this because we think it will benefit all three towns.
Correct.
To be able to attract someone who's qualified, who will put in the time and who will stick around for a few years, um, instead of moving off to Kentucky.
He's smiling.
Uh-huh. Yeah, no, he's a nice guy, but but really.
Good. He has some legs. So basically, we're, we're, we're all in the same, we're pretty much on the same field here. We've got the same ideas. We know what we're, what we're looking for. That's the big thing. We aren't, we aren't coming from different tangents. So that's, I guess that's the biggest thing we were trying to find out along with who gets stuck talking, so.
And and to be clear, and to be clear, all of the towns are approaching this in good faith and want to find a good solution. And I don't think any of the other towns are trying to say we're gonna stick Georgetown with a bigger bill. So it's a good, good group tomorrow with a good outcome, I hope.
Yep.
Hopefully, yeah. And good to have a lawyer on board.
Yeah.
So are we, are we good on that?
So we've got that covered then. I think we're. Yep.
Perfect. Cool. So now we are into new business and we've tackled the liquor license renewal for four cuckoo birds. So the next item up is the ordinances dispositions. And in your packet, you did have a tracker that captured some of the high-level changes of each of the ordinances that have been received. And the plan tonight is John will have us go through one by one and we will take some notes. I will stress that on the floodplain management ordinance, there was one change that I omitted on my tracker. And it was a very small one, but it was just conforming with federal regulations. So I just wanted to flag that there's a little bit of new info, not very much.
And and is our goal in going through this to uh decide how to send on these, these ordinances, whether to send them back to a committee, send them on to legal or send them to the ordinance review? Is that the goal?
I believe so.
Yeah, the the goal tonight is to decide whether or not we're gonna be sending them to council pre-hearing, whether we're going to send them just right to the hearing or if we want to send it back to a committee for further review. Is that, that's kind of exactly what you just said, so.
Yep.
Okay, well, it seems to me that some of them, uh, the several of the planning board ordinances are are really the same language, uh, getting rid of the fees and said, and talking about the fee schedule. In some of these ordinances, there are additional issues. But the harbor committee, wireless communications, um, solar energy and small wind, that fee schedule is the only change. So it's kind of a one, one decision. Does that change need to go to legal or can it go straight to the ordinance hearing? And then we could move those four or five out of the, out of the pack.
There, there are some discrepancies in all of the, the administrative discrepancies in many of the ordinances. So those, I will share what I found with Tyler on Thursday when he's back in the office. Um, yes, the decision is, can they just go to the ordinance hearing? Um, the one, the building and demolition for, uh, we should probably go over these sequentially, but the.
Okay.
ADU.
Sorry, I just was trying to streamline the process, but never mind. Let's go through them.
Well, a couple of them, there is gonna be some, I think, significant discussion.
Uh, the first one's building demolition permits?
Building demolition. Um, all right, I would recommend that that does go to legal counsel because the changes aligning the ordinance with the new laws in the state of Maine regarding or regarding ADUs. Um, the farm stands are simple and the updated language for abandoned structures, simple. Um, the ADU, I think, triggers, uh, having Chris can take a look at it.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
We know. Perfect.
And what's the next one? Conservation?
With, I won't.
Look, sorry, are you waiting for me?
Do you have anything for conservation?
Um, I was present when they adopted it and I think it's excellent. I think it's very clean, very clear and conforms to existing state statute while adding things that are locally relevant. So I have no issues with it. I don't, I mean, it's new, so it, as a new ordinance, probably should go to legal. In that we've had legal review, all of the existing ordinances.
Most of them, just most of them. They all haven't been, just the ones that had changes. We haven't gotten them all to the, to legal yet.
Right.
But we're, we're working on it.
He's pretty much said that every time it comes up, if it hasn't gone to legal, it should.
Yeah.
And we do have a list of it.
So Brahman, um, I called Kathy today. If you look at um section two, C one, I think that it, we should end the general provisions at the period at the end of easements. And we should not further restrict by discussing tree growth, open space and reiterating the shoreland zoning.
I think those things probably came from statute, but Kathy has reported to the committee your conversation and indicated that if, if you want to make that motion, uh, she will accept it.
Right. Scratch from easement on section two, um, two, C one. I can show it to you when we review them on Thursday.
And I'm making good notes.
Two, C one.
So now the question is still, does that mo- does that ordinance as amended go to legal or go to the ordinance review?
I would, I would recommend that it goes to legal being a brand-new ordinance, though I doubt that that's gonna be one that will take Kristen much time.
I think we might as well get it out of the way and then.
Right, exactly.
You know?
So will, uh, do we need to vote on that, that, or as a member to just go?
Perfect.
Okay.
To legal.
So the next one's floodplain management?
It's a thick one.
Yeah, no kidding.
I didn't get any. I didn't stick.
Federal regulation changed, changed the definitions and def- changed to a fee schedule and.
Right.
Shouldn't have to go to legal. They're pretty straightforward.
Okay.
My recommendation.
Are you comfortable, Brahman, with that skipping legal at this stage?
Yeah. Yep, I read it. I have to say. It was exciting. Doesn't really tell you what to do when things flood, though. Like Williams Road, you know?
Mm-hmm. Department of the Interior, what? Okay, so that one, that one just goes to the, uh.
Ordinance.
Yeah. Ordinance hearing, okay. Um, the next one's shellfish. That one was pretty straightforward. They just did their, took their, uh, cause I wasn't on that one. They took their fee schedule out of it and the changes in the licensing, they didn't, they added a spot because they had no provision for somebody going from a training or student or, or the, a probit, one of the lower licenses after they've gone through their time and up and done the work to, to get a real license. They didn't have a, a way of getting the person to be able to go in and 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 get a license. So that's, that is what that um change was for.
So that could just go to the ordinance hearing?
I, I would believe so.
Yeah.
Yep.
And the good news is you guys had somebody from the marine resources.
Yeah, we had somebody right there with us. Well, I mean, from the DMR or whatever, marine resources when we were doing that. Shoreland zoning ordinance.
It's straightforward. Definitions and removal of fee. It should go right to hearing.
Okay.
To hear it. Are you good with that, Brahman?
I am. No problem.
Uh, next one, small wind-powered energy systems. Was that purely fee schedule?
Yeah.
So that should be able to go just to the hearing?
Yes.
And solar energy as well.
Same thing. Okay.
Now, I want to see the second page or backside of your track over there.
Solid waste ordinance.
But Brahman, do you want to give us an overview?
An overview?
Well, I don't know. I have a lot of concerns with that. Um, I mean, probably most of a page worth of questions and concerns.
Um, I would suggest that we come back to it.
Okay.
And in that some of, we need to talk about town and property management, probably. I don't know about the subdivision, but waterways and wireless seem pretty straightforward. If we made a decision on them and came back to the ones that need to be discussed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Send these off. There's spelling error in waterways.
Hey, we'll get it.
Yeah.
Okay, so less the spelling, the, they're both ready to go to the ordinance to the hearing?
And was that the same with subdivision?
Uh, waterways and.
Waterways and and wireless. I don't know about subdivision. Uh, are there issues with the subdivision, Rich?
Uh, now that I saw Brahman, it's mainly, um, uh, there, there were no significant changes except the fee schedule and we'll go over any admin things, Tyler. Okay.
Mm-hmm. So that's.
So we're gonna send that to ordinances as well? Yes?
Okay.
Which leaves us with solid waste and town on property.
Okay.
And.
Anyone do first?
Well, are there any issues with the town on property as a, as an ordinance? They've um added special permits and user permits, a number of categories that were not previously part of the ordinance.
Right. Um, some things that, um, I spoke to you, uh, Stephen about and we've talked to Tyler. Uh, we just need to make sure that the permit applications are annotated where they are in the ordinance. Uh, there's a fee schedule that's identified, but the permits at the moment are not, the applications are not part of that fee schedule. So we'll just make sure that we clearly define if someone wants a permit for whatever TOPMV offers, they know where to go to get it and how, with a deadline to fill it out, et cetera, for submission.
So it's like because of the, or, uh, a reaction to the, um, polar bear thing, probably, cause they didn't know where to go to get, or, or ish?
Um, and I mean, everything for, um, like, we need a license to use the, the, um.
Hoist.
Okay, yeah.
If, if we have a special event for someone wants to get married or they want to have film a commercial down in the war, they need a permit. So nowhere in the ordinance say for a special use application, go here.
Okay.
So it's as easy as Tyler and Stephen figuring out, this is the wording we want to use and then embed it in.
Okay.
And then one, um, in section M, it says the town office should be the entity that defines the residency qualification. And I really don't want to put that on the town clerk or the town administrator or the town treasurer if Mary answers the phones.
In other ordinances, it's defined. The resident is defined.
And in this one, it says it'll be determined by the town office. And I would like some.
Yeah, that's new. I, I don't think that's what it said before, but okay. I think, um, there's the option. Stephen may want to speak to that. It looks like he's on board with his iPad and he's visible. Maybe he can even hear us. But.
We want some clarification on that. Steven?
Uh, on, only that, uh, residency and in my experience in municipal government, um, has been. residency and in my experience in municipal government, um, has been a bit of a question sometimes. Um, if the ordinance says if you are, uh, a taxpayer in town, you're a renter. You know, we've taken our ordinance, uh, our residency requirement from, uh, the solid waste committee. And we're in accord with them. Um, but it shouldn't be up to our board to determine when someone comes to the town office to pay their fees, whether or not they're a resident. And it was not clear in the ordinance whether, you know, who, who determines residency? So, uh, there's no better place to determine residency than the town office.
Actually, I'd agree with that. And it is the town clerk who decides whether or not to give a transfer station sticker to someone who comes in and says that they're a resident. Uh, and that, but it, it goes back to the definition that's in the ordinance. So what you're telling me Stephen is that the ordinance still defines resident.
Correct.
But determination of whether you meet that criteria is up to the town office.
Correct. We don't have the resources, you know.
No, you don't have the lists. You don't even have the taxpayer list.
We got nothing.
And you don't want it, I'm sure.
Absolutely. Um, and we're not trying to pass something off on the town office. But that's where all other residency requirements are established.
Zero. Resident.
Well, okay, so.
Qualification shall be determined. So, so does.
All I'm looking at is let's figure out what we are going to say with this permit. Shellfish, planning board, boards and committees all have different legal definitions of resident. Transfer station has a different legal resident, how we interpret a resident. So whatever this board comes up with is fine. I just want to make sure it is written in this ordinance. It doesn't say, call the town office and get an answer because we may not have a uniform answer. So I think we'd, I'd like to establish what that, and we don't have to do it now, but I'd like to establish officially what residency means and insert it in here.
So it's just a check rather than a, they have to.
Right.
Yeah. So they.
What I understand from Stephen though is that that's already there. I'm not looking at the ordinance.
So it just says to, to be determined by the town office.
Doesn't it say the word resident shall have its ordinary meaning and shall include persons owning or renting real residential property in Georgetown? Will use that property for year, year round seasonal home.
And then the red is residency qualification shall be determined by.
But that's what they're adding.
What was this one from?
This is the end of the TOP MB ordinance.
So it's already in there? Okay. So it's already in the, in the, is that redundant then? Or should that be in both? I'm, I'm just a little confused. That's all.
The red, if we're going to go with the black. If we're going to go with the definition that's already there, then we, I don't see why we need this red here.
I think what Stephen is, no, what Stephen is trying to say is that the black is the definition of resident as it applies to this ordinance. But whether or not you meet those qualifications is determined at the town office.
Correct.
Which is what happens.
Which is different.
Well, it should be part of the, it's part of the application then, right? Yeah. So it's, am I, am I missing, am I missing something on this or?
No, I don't think so. No, no. The, the town clerk would be the one to determine whether or not, you know, I mean, she's the one that determines residency for, for the, for the, you know, school.
For car registrations, for voting, for moorings, et cetera. So would it be from town office to town clerk?
Well, yes, by the town clerk.
Okay.
Then the, just change it.
Yeah. I mean, he's calling Georgetown town.
For, perfect.
Okay. So. Does that sound all right?
Yeah, we have one more. This is three day.
So.
Do you have another question? Are you okay?
Go ahead.
Even so, we're talking about changing the, the, the last word on that sentence from Georgetown town office to the Georgetown town clerk. Okay.
There you go.
Bronwyn? You liked it. That's okay.
Effectively, that's the person who'd be doing it anyway.
Of course, of course. Yes, yes.
Okay. Let's, let's clear it up.
It was easy. Just wanted, needed to be clear.
Yep.
All right. The next one is section L. The town board of appeals form, uh, it's, it says if someone has a concern with any of the, the fees or fines or anything that goes on in this ordinance, they can appeal it to the Georgetown board of appeals. The Georgetown board of appeals application says there are only two appeals that they entertain. One is from the planning board and one's from the code enforcement officer. It's right here. There's the application. This is an appeal of an action of planning board or the codes officer.
Okay.
Well, we also have solid waste and we also have now town on property management board.
Well, that's a problem with the, with the appeals board ordinance because every time there's been a question about an ordinance needing, uh, an appeals paragraph. We've been referred to the appeals board, that that's where you go for appeals in Georgetown. And if that's not accurate, well, we need to revisit quite a bit of, um, previous advice. But, um.
Hasn't been accurate since 2014, Bronwyn.
Well, fine. I mean, I, I don't know what to tell you, except that, that since.
I'm bringing it to your attention that we have a discrepancy. That's all.
Okay. Where do you want to fix it?
You're the chair of board, of board.
Does that mean it just gets?
May I make an exception? May I make a, uh?
I'm, I'm all ears.
Normally the board of appeals hand handles land use.
Absolutely.
Okay. And, and anything else comes to the select board. You are, you are the board.
Okay, I'm, I'm.
That, that it comes to. You know what I'm saying? So normally the board of appeals would handle appeals relate, relating to land use. The code enforcement officer wouldn't give them a burning, a permit. The planning board wouldn't give a permit. Okay. Uh, when, when there's an issue with the town on property management board, the solid waste committee, any of the other recreation committee, any of the other committees, that comes before the board of select.
Not the, not the board of appeals, because that's, that's purely, like you say, land.
Land use.
Absolutely. And that's the way we've always used this.
And, and so I don't know.
And we have the chair of the board of appeals, Aria has her hand up and might be able to offer some thoughts on that. And let me unmute you. Oh, you're unmuted. Perfect.
Yeah. Thank you, Tyler. I, thank you for that. Um, I would, I, I would run that by Kristen. Traditionally, uh, that's how it's been used, but that doesn't mean that we are operating in the way that is compliant with the law about how boards of appeals should be run. So we just want to make certain that we're doing what we should be doing according to MMA and, and our legal counsel. So that no one comes back to, um, to, uh, address that with us and, and we look like we don't know what we're doing. Thanks.
Any of that has, either of those been to our legal since we've gotten the new ones?
No idea.
I, I don't, I don't know. I don't remember. So.
Regardless, those two ordinances need work.
Okay.
In that area.
Certainly in that area.
And Stephen.
Oh, sorry, Stephen.
Stephen's got his hand up too.
Can I say one more thing? Oh, sorry, Stephen. Can I say one more thing, Stephen? Thank you. Um, you know, we have, we have, we also have retired lawyers in town who are interested in serving on the board of appeals. And so I'll give their names to Tyler and to Bronwyn. And, you know, that will be of some help as well with, with land use background. So that will be of some help, I think, to this process, including to Kristen. Thanks.
Thank you. Stephen?
I would only say that, uh, you know, these are part of the ordinances that I inherited in my last six years serving on town on property management board. And, uh, it doesn't matter to us where the appeal goes. Um, but if a citation is issued by the harbor master, the, uh, board of selectmen or the, the, uh, supervisors of the, the harbor master. And so we would agree that those appeals should go to the select board. I, I believe I can speak on behalf of my colleagues.
Okay. Thank you. Is that?
I, I would, can I just add that in the time that I served on the TOP MB, there were several, or I, I don't recall if it was our ordinance or another ordinance that came forward without a paragraph uh, about appeals, about an appeal process. And in those cases, it was simply dumped on the appeals board. It was like, that's, that's the appeals function in Georgetown. And so that paragraph was added. I don't, I'm, I'm kind of with Stephen. I don't really care where the appeal would go. And in some instances, I'm not sure what would be appealed, you know, um.
Exactly. Yeah.
But there are people who said you have to have an appeals process. Send it, you know, put in this language about the appeals board. So that may turn up in more than just the TOP MB ordinance as a, an anomaly. But I think it is a question for Kristen.
Yeah. Is that Dave, is that his hand up to say something?
Uh, that's my hand.
Oh, okay. So.
Thank you for that Bronwyn.
Nothing.
Sorry, Stephen. What did you say?
I just said, thank you for that.
Oh, you're welcome.
So where do we stand with this one?
So.
Some research will be done. I'll call MMA tomorrow and give them a ring.
Okay. So that's going to be looked at then?
Yes.
Okay.
And.
And Stephen's hands up.
Steve? Stephen?
The way we have written out, um, fees in our ordinance, uh, in a meeting that Bronwyn attended with TOP MB in February, is that we would create a schedule. And I just want to make sure you all are aware that we don't care if it's a consolidated town fee schedule. Or it's in a, it's a schedule to our ordinance. But we feel the board of selectmen haven't made up their mind yet how they want to handle this pulling fees out of, uh, the ordinances. And we don't care. Um, but it's been established through the lawyers that the TOP MB has authority to, uh, set fees and, uh, fines for certain things. And so, you know, it doesn't matter to us how you word it. We've given you a schedule of what we proposed. And how you word it doesn't matter whether it's a schedule to our ordinance or whether it is a consolidated town fee schedule. What we need from you is clear direction on how you want us to, uh, manipulate the ordinance changes to incorporate what the town is trying to do.
Well, I thought we'd, the, the way, the way I understood it was that any of those fees, if they were to be changed, it was going to be changed under the advisement of the committee. Purely that simple. I mean, just if, if you feel as though it needs to be changed, you've tell us that you need to change or you want to change. And we will go do whatever we need to do to, to make that adjustment to the fee schedule. That's how we, that's how I understood it. So.
Well, that's correct, John, but my understanding is that we need to do it with a public hearing. And so we've written into our ordinance that one of the limitations of our board is we cannot change fee schedules without a public hearing.
The public hearing will be here.
Yes. That's a little like, we can do it right here in this. All we have to do is advertise it and then, and then, um.
Right.
So it's, it's.
So we don't know whether, you know, how it's going to end up, but we don't care. Um, yeah, you know, in terms of the consolidated schedule, we don't care. Um, you know, if the TOP MB, it continues to set the fees for usage of town owned property that we're responsible for, um, which our ordinance gives us, uh, the, the authority to do. Um, you know, how you want to word it and how you want to, uh, dissect it is fine with us, you know? So we anticipate that what we've submitted is going to change. But the premise, you know, of, of, of it should not.
Okay. Well, this, I mean, this is something that's to be looked at and, and I, I've, I didn't notice it that much. So is that just something that's straightforward? It'll be, well, it'll be looked at and addressed and either come back.
I might, I might say that I think our ordinance needs to go to legal.
I would agree with that.
I hope the select board would agree with that.
I would agree with that if only because you're creating new categories. Um, but also I wanted to be, I wanted to be clear that in the case of the TOP MB, because it is an elected board, that the fees you set are actually the fees. Other fees are set by the select board. With advice, whatever, but it's different when the TOP MB sets the fee. And the harbor committee recommends a fee. Because the select board in the harbor committee case has the final say. In the TOP MB, I believe the TOP MB should have the final say. And the wording that I proposed for your ordinance reflected that. Um, I know that it was part of what you shared, what we saw from Tyler uh, in one of the iterations of all of this. Um, there's been so much paperwork to look at that it's easy to get lost uh, in the, in the sentences. But we've dealt with almost all the ordinances. Um, so we can revisit the wording of this particular issue.
And send it to legal.
And then send it to legal.
Or, or Kristen will come up with, Kristen will come up with a suitable, uh, suggestion. Yes.
Yeah. She doesn't like the way we put it.
Exactly.
Yep.
The horse dead.
Mm hmm. So we're heading that off to legal?
Yes.
And everyone agrees it's going to legal. Perfect.
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And we've got one more ordinance left on solid waste.
Solid waste ordinance.
So I have no issues with the solid waste ordinance. I participated or attended, um, at least four or five workshops on the changes substantive and language changes specifically to definitions. And, um, is, let's see, is that, yes. Uh, I see that Dave Polito is present. Um, I don't know if Allison is here. But they were both instrumental in making these changes. So I think if you have questions, Rich, they would best be addressed to members of the committee, but I'm happy to chime in after they've had a say.
Okay. I just have some, some questions. I'm hoping their ordinance will be clear and concise. Um, it appears that we don't accept lumber and things for personal renovations. Um, the bulky waste definition's changed. And it says any acceptable waste that is not construction waste, municipal solid waste or recyclables. So I'm assuming now that our bulky waste container, we're not accepting two by fours or singles or, uh, gutters or anything else that comes from. Or singles or uh gutters or anything else that comes from. Uh anyone in town doing a minor renovation on their own home?
That's not my, that's not my understanding.
All right, well, I'm just reading the. I'm reading the ordinance and the bulky waste definition is the whole thing I just read. Any acceptable waste.
That that has not changed. It has not changed. That definition has not changed.
And that's fine. I'm still, I'm looking for clarity, Allison. That's all. So are we accepting construction waste?
As long as no permit was required.
Okay, well, it doesn't say that. So I'd like to have that definition clarified, please. This is, I mean, this is the time of year to do it. And this is gonna have to go to legal, so we should probably make sure that our definitions are accurate. I thought we were accepting lumber, but it it I was surprised when I saw this in the ordinance as it's written. Uh, the next thing. Go ahead.
That's just definition. When. There there's bulky waste, there's construction waste. And in the. It somewhere in here, that was not a part that of anything that we changed this year. That change was made when we moved the.
Construction waste.
Uh, everything to the building permit.
Okay, I mean, do you have the, do you have the ordinance in front of you, Allison?
I do, but I'd have to go through it because that was not anything that we've made any changes to. So I'm gonna have to look through this and see.
Right, so, but but it says any acceptable waste that is not construction waste. Construction waste is D.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it includes, but it's not limited to, and they're not saying they don't take it. That's construction waste. And then and then we have a definition for municipal solid waste.
Right, well, it says, right, any acceptable waste, any acceptable is not construction.
Any acceptable waste that is not construction.
Right.
Right.
That's what I'm saying. So it means it sounds like it excludes it.
And I think what they're doing, though, is they've created, they have a definition later of what construction waste is.
And municipal solid waste.
And of recycle.
Okay. I think I I understand that. I I'm just reading it. I was confused on what was accepted. That's all.
Okay.
So the next thing, the the commercial, the transport. I think I understand what you're trying to do. You're trying to let Chris Martin and anyone who handles the Malden Island trash. Come and use the transfer station with multiple houses. But you don't want anyone else to be able to do that. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, and that is because that is what the DEP wants. As part of our license, every year we have to make a report. And on our report, they want us to list all users. And I could read the whole thing. But I won't bother. And we have for many years simply written down residents of Georgetown. Which while accurate, is not really what they're asking. And they have sent letters to us with the report. Um, asking us to track and give them information on. Uh, people that should have transporter licenses. And they also talked about this in the most recent training. So we finally, after much debate. Were able to figure out a way to revise our ordinance. So that then we can come into compliance with the DEP. And start collecting that information. And then if people are identified that. Need to have transporter licenses, then they can deal with that with the DEP.
Do do Malden and um and Mac Mahan need a transporter license? Because the Sheep's Island Company that employs their caretaker doesn't own any of the houses. So it says they own municipal waste. So Sheep's Island Company doesn't generate waste. The individual homeowners do. So I just want to make sure that we're in compliance with the rules. As you're, because if we have someone come from Malden, then there are eleven households on Malden. The Malden Island Association does not generate trash. The individual houses do. So I want to be clear that we can't have one person take care of all the Malden trash or one person take care of the Mac Man trash.
There are exemptions to the DEP's transporter licensing program. And those exemptions include. Uh. A number of, I'm I'm not gonna read it all through this. Rich, if you want to sit down with me and I will take you through all of this. Because it's gonna take a while.
Well, and and that's, that's okay. And I just want to wonder if we have a number of people that manage properties onto down the town. And there's, are they allowed to pick up trash at houses they manage? That's it's a straightforward question.
A a license, a license is required for a person transporting municipal solid waste. From six or more households. Uh. Or any business transporting municipal solid waste for or more trips per week. From their commercial establishment. So think the campground, WoodX, the general store, a business. So there are exemptions. In the transporter licensing program. And that is any commercial establishment which transports only its own municipal solid waste. To a licensed facility such as ours, using three or fewer trips with one conveyance as in. One trailer per week. And so it is likely that if you consider. Malden as or Mac Mahan as a business. Because they sort of are, they are entities. Uh, and they, neither of them transports more often than. The, you know, falls under that, the three times a week. So it is likely that they would be exempt from that. That doesn't necessarily mean that we shouldn't be reporting that on our report. But it's likely that they would not need to have a transporter license.
And my, another concern, I'm I'm eventually drilling down. We have a number of moms that clean homes on the side. And part of their a- agreement with the homeowner is they bring their trash to the transfer station. So we have mothers that have side jobs and I don't want to make a rule. That is going to have them violate the rule.
I want to be very clear, Rich. We are not making this rule. This is the DEP's rule. We are simply positioning ourselves. So that we can come into compliance with our license. And we can start providing the information to the DEP. That they have requested of us for many years.
Okay.
And we are also trying to, right now, our, as our ordinance is written. Commercial hauler, our previous definition of commercial hauler. Says that we do not accept waste from anyone who is a service for hire. Which means that right now, our ordinance excludes. The caretaker of Mac Mahan, the caretaker at Malden Island. All of those moms doing all of that business. Technically, according to our current ordinance, should not be allowed into the transfer station. We are trying to bring that into a workable, compliant ordinance.
And if the moms in question are hauling trash. For fewer than six households. Or if they're not making more than three trips a week to the transfer station. Then they're not, they're not disqualified. They're not in, they are in compliance.
Ron, when they're they're hauling more, I wouldn't mention it. Okay, they, it's fine. So we're still gonna allow folks to come in and do what they do. Is what I'm hearing. No one's gonna be at the gate inspecting addresses or inside the bags of garbage.
Well.
That, that's not necessarily true.
No. Well, but what we may very well be doing is saying we need to get some information from you. To report it to the DEP. Which may result in some people then being asked to get a license from the transporter program. And Rich, I would be happy to send you all of that information. If that would help. You understand this.
Well, I I understand it perfectly, Allison. I guess I'm trying to mitigate concerns. That we have some contractors that are property managers. I know they pick up more than six houses.
And yes, we have. We have many people that probably should have a transporter license from the DEP.
But then you're saying the transporters aren't allowed in our transfer station. Is generated.
Very well may be true.
And that's where, I don't know if we want to adopt this ordinance. That's, that's what I'm saying.
I think that's up to the town meeting. Whether or not the town wants to adopt the ordinance.
Or with the changes, we can present the changes, Ramon. That's that's our authority.
Well, we can, we can try that. We can try to shut down the committee if you want to.
No, it's not.
Um, I think that they have a right to go around us if they choose. I think Dave Polito might have had something to say earlier.
I. Yeah, I've got a lot of things to say that might explain uh some of our motivation. And uh the whole commercial hauler. Uh, concept that we've been fighting all along, with the reason we try to fight that is not to make life hard for people. Uh, it's to save the town money and to save abuse, uh so that we can control what comes in and make sure that it comes from Georgetown. And if someone's coming into the transfer station in a pickup truck. Full of garbage bags and they say that they've cleaned, that they clean houses in Georgetown. We have to either take them for their word or as we have the right to do. We can take their garbage on the ground and we can rip it apart and we can look for envelopes. And we've got people, as you well know, Rich, we've got people with dozens of clients, okay? And if we have someone coming in with dozens of clients. We have to have a way to protect the town by knowing that those dozens of clients all come from Georgetown. And we've come to the conclusion that the easiest way to do that is to limit the number of clients. To the, to a level at which we can make inspections, which we will do if we need to. And so it's not, we're not anti anti mom, Rich, you know? We're not trying to make it hard for people to clean houses. We're trying to protect the taxpayers of Georgetown. From being abused by people from out of town. And then we've seen advertisements on Facebook. That lead us to know that people, that this isn't some dream that we have, that you can abuse the town of Georgetown. We've seen it on Facebook. So uh, that's our motivation. And uh, that's why we're limiting, we're trying to limit the number of clientele. That any provider can service, all right, not, and if we, we, if we allow someone to service. Limitless clients because, just because they're a nice guy who's trying to help people take care of things or a nice cleaning lady who's. Cleaning lots of houses. We have to be able to control. We have to do something that the, that the staff at the transfer, uh staff at the transfer station can inspect and control.
So is the DEP limit six or is it Georgetown limit six?
Both.
That, that, yes, the DEP, we, we wrote our proposed draft. To be in compliance with the DEP's transporter program language.
Okay. Um. Are we gonna have PPE and things for the transfer station for the guys that are rooting through this garbage? Like Sharps training and and things like that?
Yes, they've already had that training. Thank you.
But do we have the PPE for the rubber gloves and all that stuff?
They should. They have the budget for it. When I worked there, I had the gloves. It is not our intention to be rooting through people's garbage. It is our intention to not lose our license from the DEP because they. Find out that we're not being truthful. On our report.
And skipping down, if we go to section six. The illegal dumping of waste, aren't all those covered by state statute? My concern with this is we don't have, hold on, Allison, we don't have a means to enforce of someone. Dumping a refrigerator. The way we enforce is what we did last year when someone dumped refrigerators, we called the sheriff and the sheriff handled it. So I think that section six is, well, there are good rules. Um. It's illegal to deposit construction waste on the side of the road. We have to tie it down. We can't litter, we can't abandon vehicles. I think the section six should probably be eliminated from the ordinance, just on quick ability.
That is not a change to the ordinance. That is part of the ordinance. Uh, actually, that's part of the original ordinance that was put into effect, I think in two thousand and five.
Right, that's what I'm asking, Allison.
They have made no changes to that.
Can we strike it?
Why don't we say that until next year when? Because it was hard enough to get the changes that we did make. But if, when this goes to legal, if legal says that we should eliminate that. I'm happy to, but that was not a section of the ordinance that we reviewed at this time.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Can we strike it? You're saying, no, we can't.
I, I don't know, because we didn't talk about it.
Okay.
I I don't see why you would strike it, even if it is in statute. And even if you can't necessarily enforce it as a, you know, there are a lot of things that are illegal. And and it's not a bad idea to tell people that it's illegal. Because most people won't do it if it's illegal. Some people might. Those are the people that you have to chase and get the the sheriff for, et cetera. Um, but I think. I think Allison's point is that as far as the committee is concerned. They looked at certain aspects of the ordinance to try and make progress in revising it. And that was not a section that they looked at. And if legal says there's no point in having it, strike it. Well, then, that's pretty clear. But if you want the committee to decide to strike it. They're prepared to look at it next year.
Okay, the next thing, the enforcement and the violations. This select board does not have a mechanism of grant of signing someone for. A violation of anything in this ordinance. And then it says go to the Board of Appeals in the event that the select board finds someone they don't agree with it. We don't have a mechanism. So I was gonna suggest we scratch section seven as well. Um, just, we don't have a mechanism to for for this entire section.
Again, Rich, I would be happy to look at that in the future, but that was not something that we reviewed this time. So I'm, I'm not prepared to debate it right now because it's not something that we looked at.
It shouldn't be debated, Allison.
Has been voted on in two thousand and five, two thousand and eight and two thousand and seventeen.
And the Board of Appeals piece, we are aware, and a couple of ordinances at the advice of previous counsel. Good thing we changed them. We shall. So that the appeals part, I don't think is anywhere on their fault for not catching that, because frankly, we haven't caught it in some of the other places.
So we can, um, great, before these things go, we will. Update changes. And.
I'd like to, I'd like to say that uh. You can't enforce the parking regulations at Todd's Landing, but you're not gonna take the sign down. Okay, you know, you're, you're talking about, you're saying that you can't enforce things. If you can't enforce it. Take it to strike it from the ordinance because it can't be. take it to strike it from the ordinance because it can't be enforced. We have no mechanism to enforce it.
Parking, we do, Dave. We have a mechanism to for parking. That's the harbor master. That's been discussed. We don't have a
What I'm saying is
Doesn't have a means to in in full, impose a fine on someone at the transfer station. Instead, the first offense will be fifty dollars, up to five hundred dollars.
You have the right, you have the right and the ability to refuse someone's uh, access to the station, as you well know.
Yes.
All right. Is that not enforcement?
No, we can enforce that. This has monetary fines, Dave. It's clear on monetary fines that we're never going to impose. That's what I'm just saying, just eliminate it and save paper. Just get rid of the section. And the last, I guess, last thing, we'll go down this path. Uh, there's still the ambiguity on if someone violates a rule, either they can be banned from the transfer station until they correct their discrepancy, or the select board hears it. And we ran into this problem last October. And we still have the same problem.
I can't even discuss that.
No, I'm, I'm the point of either the attendants handle it and they come up with a plan of action, or they kick it to the select board. But you have an O in there. And so if you say to someone, you can't come back, well, then they say, well, when can I come back? The ordinance says when they fixed our discrepancy.
Rich, once again, that is not a section of the ordinance that we took up.
Allison, if something's goofed up, you can fix it anytime. And that's ambiguous, and it was last October. And we got a letter from the solid waste committee that we weren't supporting you. So hopefully you would have corrected that and it wouldn't be ambiguous, so there wouldn't be this problem in the future. And here we are.
Uh, we, it, we wanted to prioritize the things that need to be corrected in the ordinance. We chose as our priority, the transfer station manager or designee that you asked us to correct, and we chose correcting our issues with the commercial hauler. We are volunteers with limited time. And we would be happy to visit those other issues next year.
And do we want to make any changes to that ambiguous loss of privilege from the select board? So we can try to avoid something that happened in October?
If you would like to write it, please feel free.
I was speaking with Ramon and John Allison.
Oh, okay.
I'm not interested. I would like to allow the so, the solid waste committee to review that clause of, I, I'd, I'd like you to submit to them all of your problems with the ordinance and let them review those issues um, as they have methodically reviewed the other issues to which they made changes in this cycle. I I think there may be um, more at at stake than just the ambiguity that you find in that one sentence. And I don't think it behooves us to, in the last hour of a select board meeting, rewrite entire ordinances that have been functioning successfully. Um, if, if perhaps imperfectly, uh, for a number of years. So I, I'm not anxious to upend what this committee has spent many hours uh, working on. And I, I do think that they would take these criticisms seriously and uh, spend additional time to work up corrections. But I'm not sure that we all agree on what the issue is, especially in that instance. So that, that's just my position, as you asked.
I fully understand what you're trying to do with the DEP. I get that. And with, with some creativity, I'm sure people, if they only go to the, their same six spots and only come in three times a week from those same six spots, that's one way around it. You can, I mean, that's, that's beside the point. Um, the other stuff, if that gets looked at next year, I'm fine with it. The one, I, the one thing that I do, I will agree with Rich on with the ambiguity about the two, whether it's us or you determining who does uh, the, the penalties. Because on that particular incident, I did go and it was brought to my attention. And so I went to the sheriff's department. And I thought, once that, boom, it's, it was in our thing, took the sheriff's department, sheriff's department was going to take care of it. I did not realize that there was more stuff going on on that. So in that sense, when it came back, that the solid waste committee didn't feel as though we took that seriously and we weren't doing anything about it. I took a little and I, it, you know, probably should have been water off my back, but I did not feel as though we did not take it lightly. If you get the sheriff's department or the sheriff involved, you are taking something seriously. So that, that's my only gripe with that one. And if anything was going to get rewritten in the short term, I can understand why that would be because that, that does raise my hackles a little bit. Beyond that, I can understand what you're doing and I would be, the other stuff, if that gets done next year, I would deal with that. That's, that's okay. But I mean, I can, I can see that, that one.
D.
Right here. Yeah, that one.
That person until he or she complies or
Yes, that one piece right there, that one, whatever needs to be done. If that, if that's a simple grammar or something on that D of whatever.
D.
If that's, if that's agreeable, I'm, 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 I'm okay with.
We have a solid, a solid waste committee meeting on Thursday.
Is that fair?
Perhaps we could look at that, Allison and Dave, at that meeting and come back with a suggestion. Does that seem?
Yes, I will, I will try and look at it and try and propose some language.
Thank you.
Does that
So is the plan to have this come back to our next select board meeting on the twenty seventh? After that change has been tackled, or are we sending that directly onto camp? I just want to know what the next
Wait until the, the rest of them can go once you and I look them over. The uh,
But in terms of solid waste, the goal, if they're meeting this week, is to have it back for the twenty seventh. So it's not held up and can be a part of the tranche of things that Kristen will be tackling. I just want to make sure I have the right understanding of the next step on that.
I would imagine most of them will go this week, except for solid waste. Solid waste, we will straggle to her after the twenty seventh meeting.
Okay.
But I, I, I will only agree to that if this is not going to going to make us miss deadlines for the, the rest of the ordinance to be reviewed.
No, no, you'll be fine.
Okay. Then I will see what I can do.
Thank you.
I guess I have a question for the Board of Selectmen to, to help us in our discussion on Thursday. Um, what does the Board of Selectmen see as their role in enforcement at, of uh, the ordinance at the transfer station? What role do you want to take with regard to people who break the rules, leave refrigerators, whatever? What, what do you want to do and what do you not want to do? Do you want us, do you want us, do you want us to have a tribunal uh, at the, of the transfer station committee, solid waste committee? Do you want us to uh, to, to, to have a court? Or do you want to have anything to do with, with uh, with uh, enforcement of our ordinances?
Dave, how we've done it in the past, and I've been on the board coming up on six years. When the campground had issues, it was handled initially by Jim. He talked to the person that was disposing of illegal stuff. And a couple of weeks later, Jim inspected some packages that went into the dumpster and he found more illegal stuff. At that point, Jim raised it to the select board. And I would imagine if someone has a, does something that you guys don't find is in compliance with the rules, that you will address it with that person and give them an opportunity to correct their behavior. Um, if it's, I mean, a blade, if it's against the law, then call us, we'll call the sheriff. That's what they're there for. If it is a violation of uh, being a good human being or throwing stuff away they're not supposed to, tell them, these are the rules. Don't throw this stuff away again. If you catch them again, then say, please, elevate it to the select board, but do it in a timely manner. We had a discrepancy last October and the guys came in on Saturday and we still hadn't gotten a report from the transfer station supervisor by Wednesday. There was no, no written, no verbal, nothing. This happened. There wasn't a complaint made to us. So we can't take, except for the disposal of that, the lawn mower and all, and we took action immediately. John called the sheriff immediately. Um, I guess Jim was upset in that count because he was sworn at and because people were speeding. So you say, don't swear and don't speed. And then grant them access again, is what I would say. So no, I don't want you to hold a tribunal. But if it's a small discrepancy, talk to the perpetrator, see if we can handle it and move on. If it's a repeat offender, elevate it to the select board with your recommendation. And then we can send an official letter to them. They'll come before the select board and we can pull their privileges. That's what we did with the campground. And it's pretty simple. We don't have to be petulant. All we have to do is, but I hate when you say in, in, under D, that the transfer station attendant will handle it or the select board will. It's ambiguous because it doesn't clearly define when we'll get involved. A little clarity would help.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Does that take care of that? That tackles those. Okay. And so now we have the two additional items that were added at the beginning of the meeting. The first was admin and meeting times, and that was a suggestion of Rich.
Which we, I wanted to add it.
Right.
It's been brought uh, to me and John, that the meetings, at least for the next six weeks, the, the select board meeting should start earlier in the day. Uh, Tyler lives in Harpswell, and for two hours, he just hangs out waiting for the meeting to start.
I find stuff to keep busy, but again, it's time that I then at the end of the week have to
So can we start the select board meetings at six o'clock from now until the next board sits and establishes their own times?
I'm okay with six o'clock. How you feel about it, Ramon?
Not thrilled. Um, but if that is the will of the group, I can be there. I can be here. Uh, I think we might need to set an end time. Because six o'clock is normally when I try to have dinner. Uh, so
Usually when I have dinner too, so.
Six fifteen?
No.
No, I mean, the end, Mary, ten.
Sorry.
No. No, it's, it's, that's usually when I'm eating too. So I mean, it's just, I've just worked around it. And it makes sense because if they're running this long, my grilled cheese sandwich is getting less and less of an option right now because I don't feel like cooking at nine o'clock. So.
Yeah. Um, so yes, if we start at six, I would hope we might shoot to end by seven thirty and absolutely determine that we would end by eight, even if we had to table issues to be discussed at the, at an extra meeting or a future meeting.
Okay, well, that's
Seven thirty sounds good.
Seven thirty sounds awesome.
Absolutely.
So we, we don't need to vote on that or anything? Are we good? Just we're just
Yeah, we probably do need, I, I think we do need to vote. And I, I would, I'm not sure I want to say that we'll do this all the way um, to June. Let's uh, give it a month as a test.
How long are we going to be doing the budget stuff? I mean, I'm just, well, it's good, what, through April?
Okay, fine.
We'll do it.
You, you got it. Through April.
A motion to do, uh, start the meetings at six o'clock from uh, next meeting through April.
Yeah.
We got a second?
Perfect.
All in favor?
Three dough. Thank you.
And the last item on the agenda now, before we get to the formal stuff at the end, is ARPA. I mean, Richard wanted to have us discuss it.
The question to you, Mary, is, is can we do anything with the floats to start the building process to try to get ahead of this shortening lead time? April fifteenth is coming.
I understand.
And they need to build these floats and it's going to take a while. And I know we have that.
The Love Nest doesn't open until Mother's Day.
No, no, the floats, no one. The floats, the floats.
Yeah, yeah, I, what? Yeah, the floats are supposed to go in on the fifteenth. Many is the time they have not gone in for the, at least two weeks after that.
I think we already have the cranes reserved, but okay.
Uh, so the answer to your question is no.
Nothing.
They have no funding until we either have a special town meeting or, yeah.
That's all I have.
There are no funds, there's no funding.
Okay.
And we're, we're just waiting to hear from MMA about the issue of, of taking the money in as lost revenue.
Correct, yeah.
And, and what that would entail.
Right.
Well, how long do we expect that to take?
And I, I expect to hear from them by the end of the week, the latest.
So we could set a date for a special town meeting?
We don't have all of the estimates.
Do we have the estimates?
For the floats. We don't have the estimates for any of the work prepared around the Love Nest and around, um, and regardless, we didn't use ARPA, that still needs to be shored up. So we may still want to use a special town meeting to transfer funds from a reserve fund or
But you already authorized them to use money out of their reserve fund for their
Yeah, we don't need a special meeting.
That's already been, that's already been spent.
What happened?
Well, the decking's already been replaced, the first phase. That, that ninety thousand dollar approval
Yeah.
Was before the storm.
Yeah.
So it replaced the decking.
Yeah.
And the decking's been replaced.
Not in full, as far as I know.
I mean,
And then, and then, and it came in at seventy eight, not nine.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, yeah.
Steven, didn't that come in at seventy eight thousand?
You're muted.
Still muted.
Yes, Mary, you're most accurate.
Seventy eight, so we have twelve.
I can't remember what, what was asked for, I guess.
Ninety. From what I remember, ninety, we spent seventy eight. Got it, we have twelve. The numbers, I'm, I'm seeing
But that didn't take us a town meeting to authorize those reserve funds.
Right.
And they have, they have more in the reserve fund.
But we can't use the other stuff to, to replace
The reserve.
The reserve fund.
Right.
That's, that's the catch up right there.
I understand that. But what I'm thinking is that you have to publicize the special town meeting. And we could pick a date and publicize it while we are waiting for the estimates and for the information from the MMA. Um, that in and of itself might move things forward. We also could, we, we probably have to vote specifically to reallocate the forty eight thousand that is already dedicated to the church.
Right, which we expected to do anyway.
Correct.
And that money, we could vote, which would put some money towards these projects that we're hot to fund. Even if we haven't heard back about the rest of it. Or you could, you could vote for more of it to go like, because by the time that, if you, if you time it right, by the time you have the meeting, you will have the estimates.
Right, absolutely. If you're willing to take the risk, then sure, set a meet, set a date.
What is, do you think it makes taking the risk? Because, not to say you've been in the driver's seat, but you've been in the driver's seat on this and now I feel like you're pumping some brakes.
No, I'm, a town meeting takes a lot of work to organize and we have to advertise it. And if town meeting comes and we don't have the whole, all the estimates, then we may opt to call another special town meeting two weeks later. That seems a little counterproductive.
Do you think, and just spitballing out loud while I have a calendar, today is the twelve. Do you think, and just spitballing out loud while I have a calendar, today is the twelfth. Do we think we'd have estimates and all the information by the twenty-sixth? At that point, the clock would tick into April.
There's Stephen.
Does, what do you think? Do you think you'd have them?
Well, uh, what I can tell you is that, uh, we have one estimate to replace the bulkhead on the west shore of town property, or east shore, excuse me. And, uh, we are waiting, as soon as next week, another estimate. We have a solid estimate for replacing the commercial floats. And, um, if a town meeting were set, I feel pretty confident that the board of selectmen would have all the figures they need to allocate funds and help us choose a contractor if you want to be involved in that process. But we are getting multiple estimates. Kennebec Marine Services is working at the Wharf right now. They're working with us to replace the commercial floats. And we could get that done, and get the old floats in, and the new float, you know, the recreational floats in, the new floats in, um, on the commercial side, we could do it all on April fifteenth, if we committed. In terms of repair, repair of the Wharf property, in, in terms of repair of the Wharf property, I hope to have, uh, a second quote, at least for phase one, and there are three phases. At least in terms of phase one, which is repairing the east side of the Wharf, so that Five Islands Lobster Company can open up safely, and we can accommodate their customers. And I think we have a great responsibility to make that happen. So, um, in terms of, uh, from where the deck sticks out to beyond the dumpsters, that is phase two. Phase three is from the dumpsters beyond and, uh, towards Doakes' property, and that would require permits, as Rich said earlier. So that's a three-phase, three-phase operation, and we're trying to get phase one done now. And the replacement of the commercial floats is not included in that, but it is dependent on your decisions whether or not we can use these ARPA funds to do that. If we don't, then, uh, we're gonna be operating on one commercial float, uh, or we need to repair the damaged commercial float and put it back in the water when they come back here on April fifteenth. So we're trying to do the best we can in a short period of time. And as Bronwyn knows, having served on our board, you know, January to April is like when the majority of our work has to get done, and these storms have accelerated that process.
We're still hogtied or hamstrung by the legalese doing it though, until we, until we know.
What we would need is a special town me, and so what I was trying to mention earlier, if we had a warrant ready for a town meeting for this board to tackle by the twenty-sixth, come the twenty-seventh, we could get that out advertised at seven to ten days, correct, for a special town meeting? So we'd be looking at going through the third through the sixth roughly is the window on a target date, or potentially a little bit after that. That gets us, though, right up to that fifteenth issue. However, I would say we could, if we wanted to go that route, schedule a special town meeting, and I wasn't prepared to speak to this tonight. At the very least, we could rededicate some of those funds, even if we don't have the quotes, to have them go towards X, you know, they're going towards the Wharf, et cetera, correct, Rich?
Yeah.
And then afterwards, this board could help pick through those quotes. So it's not dead in the water yet, but we'd need to make a decision soon on if we're gonna pull that trigger. And we could always rededicate again in June if what we shot for in April didn't land. And we should definitely, you know, by the end of this week, but definitely by then, know more about lost revenue that we have until December to tackle, so.
So, uh, here's, here's what I would propose. That, uh, the select board authorized up to fifty thousand, fifty-five thousand dollars from the Wharf Reserve Fund to replace the commercial floats, so that we can meet that deadline. Whether the ARPA funds come through or not, but if I can give Kennebec Marine Services the word tomorrow to start building those floats and prepare to get them installed for April fifteenth, I, I, I'm, I'm speaking for our board, and I believe my colleagues would agree with me. But, you know, if we need to go into the Wharf Reserve Fund to do this, and it's legal to do that, uh, within the definition of the Wharf Reserve Fund, I think time is of the essence. And when you're hiring cranes and people to do stuff, it's better to get it done at one time than bring them back the second time.
Stephen, I agree with you. I think that if we, what you're saying is, we don't have to write a check. We don't have to pay for these things immediately. We need to promise them that, that we will have the money. And if we don't succeed in reallocating, I mean, if we had a, a special meeting and the town didn't support the vote to reallocate the funds, we would pay from the reserves. But we would, we could go forward with a promise to pay and try to get the ARPA funds and not use the reserves.
I, I guess that would be.
I think that makes perfect sense. And I think that we ought to be looking at a date for a special town meeting. And I would say you could publicize it, and if you know three days ahead that you don't have what you need, then cancel it. People are going to understand this is about an emergency and the use of funds that will save the town money.
That's what we're trying to do.
Right, well, I, I will say that we cannot use ARPA funds to replenish a reserve.
I understand, but we're not.
So as long as we get, you know, ideally, if we can get that money, you know, if we can have a special town meeting prior to anything having to be paid.
Exactly.
And move that money from the first church, that forty-eight thousand that we have over there, to this, they should be fine.
Right.
Yeah.
And if we voted to do that from the reserve, we can still change it up later?
Yes.
Yes.
As long as we haven't paid the bill.
Oh, really? So that's, we get, there is, we have the ability to do that, just because we, okay, no, then that's, I guess that's the way to do it then.
Thursday, the twenty-first. It's nine days from now.
What?
Special town meeting.
Do you need a special warrant? Or how, how does that work?
Yeah, we need a warrant.
And there needs to be a special meeting to vote to approve the warrant too, right, or can we just?
No, you could, no, you, no, you, they can do that right now.
You can make a motion right now.
They can approve coming in individually to sign the warrant.
And we, yeah, so we can certainly do that.
Do you want it on, do you want it on a Thursday? I mean, it has to be, are we, we're gonna put it in the, in the gymnasium?
Right.
Yes, and I was only thinking Thursday too, so we didn't encroach on a weekend. And next Thursday is nine days out. So it falls within the notification guidelines. Trying to be convenient for the townspeople, not, I, I don't care what day of the week.
And this is to reallocate the, the first church money.
Correct.
Correct? So that's, that's an easy enough.
Yep.
Right, and, and also, John, I assume, uh, to provide funds for, for us to do this work, right?
That doesn't need a special town meeting.
Well.
Yeah, that would be the reallocation of the funds, Stephen.
Okay, all right, all right, all right. Is, is that simpatico with everybody? I mean, you know, if we, if we put the Wharf Reserve up as, as, if you will, a reserve fund to, in order for me to give Kennebec Marine Services the go to start building floats.
Yeah.
They're gonna get paid.
Well, they will, you know, but if we're gonna do it, let's do it now.
So.
So is Thursday the, I mean, first of all, I'm not sure that an evening meeting on a weeknight is more convenient for residents than a quick meeting on a Saturday morning. I don't know what's more convenient, but typically, town meeting has always been on a weekend.
Yeah, especially a couple of years ago, during the week.
Specials can be during the week.
Okay.
We had one in two thousand eighteen or nineteen that was on a Tuesday or Wednesday night.
Well, we need to make sure we can get the, the school property, I guess.
Yeah.
Can it all be figured out tomorrow?
And I think there were eight people there, and seven of them were town, town people.
Well, there's a great recommendation.
Seven of them were, were the select board and town administrator.
So do we need a motion to go for this, that, do we, do we need a motion also for the, the possible of the, no, we don't need a motion for the reserve fund. We just need a motion to.
Correct.
Motion to.
You would, John. I would think you would.
Ideally, Stephen, we're gonna get this done, so, oh, okay, wait a minute. All right, so Stephen, what Stephen's after is he wants to be able to call Kennebec Marine tomorrow.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what Stephen wants.
Right.
Yeah.
So in that case, Bronwyn, or John, or Rich, how about a motion to allow the TOPMB to contract with Kennebec Marine for these floats? Assuming that, you know, we're going to get.
No, no, I don't, let's not assume anything. Let's, let's make a motion to allow them to, to sign the contract for the, the new floats. And, um, if you need a motion, further motion, we can guarantee payment in the event that ARPA funds are not available
Right.
from the reserve fund.
Right, yep.
That's.
Well said.
Yep. That's what I was getting at.
But we still need to do, we're still gonna.
And then there's a separate motion to schedule the town meeting.
Correct.
So I'll second that, second Bronwyn's motion.
Okay, I'm in favor. No, and a motion to hold a special town meeting on twenty-one November.
March.
No, no, not November.
Thank you. And seven o'clock, six o'clock, seven o'clock.
Which, whatever.
Seven o'clock is more of a, a meeting, traditional meeting time. That's when most, unless you want to do five, but then people might not be out for work.
Well, VR gets out at four, that's ninety percent of us, isn't it?
Yeah, special, we'll hold a special town meeting on Thursday, the twenty-first of March, time to be determined.
For the purpose of rededicating ARPA funds.
Yeah, purpose of rededicating ARPA funds from First Church to the Wharf.
Yeah. Do we want a second warrant article to tackle the undedicated funds, or are we just gonna leave those for now till June?
When do we have to post the articles? With the warrant, with this, oh.
Yeah, tomorrow or the next day.
And if you put the second article on the warrant, and we're not ready to do it, can you just table it?
You can withdraw it. Yep. Yes.
There could be a motion to withdraw.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
So do it, put it on there.
Anyone second to that?
Uh, not yet. I mean, I will second it if you, I'll, I'll second it.
Then let's vote.
Just so I'm clear, you're talking about all the ARPA funds, uh, uh, being dedicated towards the Wharf.
No.
After the special town meeting.
No, the rededication of the church and the remaining funds, if we have more information, could be dedicated to other, whether it's lost revenue, there is not consensus on all of it yet. But specifically for the flow, there is unanimity.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I'm, I just want to reiterate that we need to be prepared for Five Islands Lobster Company to be able to open and have a safe place for their customers.
We're just not prepared.
That's gonna cost a lot of money.
Can you get us that quote by the, Stephen, can you get us that quote by the twenty-sixth? Because that's money that, because that, that's money that we could use from a reserve that could be reimbursed later by FEMA for what's happening by the Love Nest. If we used ARPA money on that, we're just leaving that off the table for the town later.
Yeah, yeah, Tyler, I'm, I'm pretty confident we're gonna have a second quote, uh, just for that phase one, which is getting the Love Nest open and making it safe and building a bulkhead there, uh, by early next week.
Which would be before the twenty-eighth or whatever.
Which gets us definitely where we.
You know, and, and that, that doesn't, that doesn't cover, you know, the south shore. And John and I have talked about putting some boulders in, you know, as a temporary measure for the, um, big holes that are over, you know, the deck on the south side, just to keep it safe. You know, so, you know, we're really talking about, uh, our obligation to make it ready for Five Islands Lobster Company and make it safe for the public in addition to the floats.
I just think we're not ready to dedicate all of the ARPA funds to that. It's not that we're not, we're not underst, we understand your concerns, we share them, but we, but, and we'll pay for it somehow. How about that?
No, I, 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 I believe in our town, believe me.
Okay.
So that's all covered.
Good for us.
And, and a.
Thank you.
And our, and, and a motion to allow the select board to sign this warrant outside of a meeting.
Oh.
Right?
So.
Anytime Tyler, when Tyler calls you that it's ready, individually, you can come and decide it.
So I'll make a motion that, uh, a motion that we can come in to sign this warrant when it's ready to be signed.
Warrant for the special town meeting.
For the special town meeting tomorrow, probably.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on ARPA?
No.
Seeing none, we do have three items for signature here at the office, and then I turn this back over to you for public comment.
Is there any public comment? Sorry.
I have one other thing. Um, at the Conservation Commission meeting last night, Nancy Kinner asked me if we would want, if we were thinking of wanting her to emcee, uh, ordinance hearings, budget hearings, other, other functions as she has done in the past, only because if we do, she wants to get the dates on her rather crowded calendar. So you don't need to answer that right this minute, but you do need to think about it, and we need to get back with her.
Okay.
You know, how you want to handle those. I will say that.
All the other stuff.
I will say that it's great to have a hybrid situation where those kinds of things can be on the YouTube channel, and people who can't or don't make the initial meeting still have an opportunity to see what was said, especially ordinance and budgets. Yeah, that, that's all, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment? Thankfully, I see none.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Night, everybody. Second, night, everybody.
Night.